If we could reconvene, please. It's the July 7th, 2015, open work session with a discussion as far as the pros and cons of an elected school board and what options there might be, any proposals. We've invited a forum of distinguished individuals to help participate in this forum. If you could, please, and those that were invited, if you could come forward, we have these chairs up here for you.
Thank you.
Will you mention the microphones?
Yes. We appreciate you being here tonight. We've asked you to come tonight because, as you know, we're going to be holding public hearings in the future, and we felt that it would be good to get some type of, you know, feel for what direction we might want to go, what guidance we might want to give the public when we hold these public hearings. I know there was a lot of input on many of these individuals here today at a forum that was held a few months back. Michelle Wright sponsored it at the Greater Salisbury Committee, and I felt that the discussion was very productive, and most of you have asked to be part of this process as well. So that's why you're here tonight. Councilman Kilmer put together a brief synopsis of where we, how we got to where we are today, and I would like to, you know, I would turn the floor over to him just to give you an overview.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, thank you, everybody who was invited and who came, and thank you for everybody in the audience. This is, it's great to see delegate sample Hughes here and members of the Republican Central Committee and members of our local Board of Education in the audience, too. So, and of course, the Daily Times. We always love to see Phil at our meetings, so thank you. As many of you know, our Wycomico delegation introduced legislation in the House of Delegates to move Wycomico County towards a hybrid, to move it to a hybrid school board. That bill would have established a school board with five elected members from council manic districts, two members appointed at large by the county executive, one non-voting student member, and the county executive would have filled any vacancies in the board. Senator Addie Eckhart also sponsored legislation in the Senate that was identical. Both those bills received hearings but did not receive committee votes, and so they died in the General Assembly. And Senator Jim Mathias expressed some concern that there had not been enough public input prior to when the county council endorsed an idea unanimously and sent it up to the, to our legislative delegation. So I think that this is part of the beginning of the public input process that Senator Mathias and other delegates and senators have encouraged us to do, and we are certainly happy to have everyone here to work through some of these issues. It's, you know, I think as we found, as we started working on this, there are a lot of things that go into figuring out how to compose a Board of Education. If you look across Maryland, there are, there's wide diversity in how boards of education are composed. Most are elected, a few are hybrid, and only three are still appointed. But even among those, there's a variety of differences in terms of people are appointed through nominating commissions. Anarondale County has an appointed board, but they have retention elections once somebody's appointed. People serve different terms, they have different compensation. And so if we are going to move to an elected school board or a hybrid school board, some of the, you know, I think we'd like to find out from the public what you think some of the aspects of it should be to address the various concerns that I think people in this group and the community have expressed in terms of diversity, in terms of making sure that it represents all the members of the community. So I think that's what we're here to discuss. Is that correct, Mr. President?
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Kilmer. I guess we would open the floor. There are two mics here that we've brought so that you can, you know, you can, of course, be heard, or three mics, actually, because PAC 14 will not be able to pick up your voice unless you're using these mics. So we would open the floor to anybody that would like to begin discussion as far as your personal position or professional position on what you think may be good options, things that we need to bring forward in a public hearing. So I would certainly entertain anyone to begin the discussion. If you would like to, would you like to start? I know that you had, you're, when you start, let us know who you are if you could. You moved, so you're it. Take the mic there.
Good evening, members of the council. My name's Karen Murphy. I'm a recent graduate of Jameson Bennett High School, former SGA president at Jameson Bennett High School, and I also represent at the Eastern Shore of Maryland, two of the Maryland Association of Student Councils. And I've come here to talk to you today specifically about the student member portion of the elected school board bill. So there's a lot of sort of considerations that need to be taken into account when you're looking at this. I guess I'll start with, there are really four main types of student members that are seen in counties across Maryland as well as the state of Maryland. The first is sort of very little to no representation, and that's what Wycomico County has right now. That's what 10 other counties have right now. All of them are located either on the eastern shore in western Maryland or in southern Maryland. And essentially, this means that perhaps there's just a representative from each school that goes and gives a report at the meeting, or maybe they go and give an opinion on a vote, but their vote is not recorded. The next is the no opinion, and that essentially, for all intents and purposes, the student is a member of the board, and that's something that we don't have right now. So they sit on the board, they're allowed closed session privileges, they're invited to events that board members would be invited to. Whereas right now in Wycomico County, I was formerly one of the representatives to the Board of Education, and I was invited to a session, the open session, and that's essentially it. Once a month, I was invited to give a report and was not asked for an opinion on any votes or anything of that sort. The next sort of stage is a partial vote.
You said there was a no opinion?
That's right. So I was not asked for, if the count, if the board went through for a vote, I wasn't, or any of the members weren't asked for an opinion on the vote, although we were certainly welcome to voice our opinions. No opinion was recorded, and we had no vote or anything of that sort.
Okay.
And the next is a partial vote, and this means that the student votes on everything, generally except for budget, negative personnel matters, and collective bargaining. This is seen mainly in central Maryland counties, so I think there's six or seven that have those. And also, the state Board of Education has a partial voting student member, so he or she will vote on everything, again, except for budget, negative personnel, or collective bargaining. One county, Anarondale County, has a full student voting member. She is the only example of this in the entire country, and essentially, she is a member of the board, she votes on everything, she is paid the salary exactly the same as any other member of the board except for the president. And so that's not necessarily something that I'm looking for here or that the students are looking for in Wycomico County. What I think is most appropriate would be a partial voting student member on the board. This is sort of the precedent that we're seeing in more of the, I guess, progressive counties throughout the state. The state board has a partial voting member, and I think the fact that students can vote is a really, really important thing when we're looking at voting rights for students on the board, and that's because students are the primary stakeholders in education. And that's something that, if you look at anywhere else, that's, it's really, really unique, because if you are just a citizen over the age of 18 and you have a problem with something in your neighborhood or in your city, there's lots of different ways you can attack this problem. You can petition your councilman, you can run for office, you can vote for councilmen in or out of office. Almost all of these opportunities aren't available to the students because they can't run for Board of Education, they can't run for county council or anything like that, yet all of the educational issues are directly impacting them and in lots of cases, only impacts them. The other stakeholders in education have the opportunity to be represented. We've had many principals, teachers, staff throughout the board that have been on the Board of Education, and I think that it's definitely time to have students on the Board of Education. And so I guess when we get to this point, there's lots of other considerations that need to be taken into account, including how to put this person on the board. Most other counties have a regional student association of student councils, and that means that all the student councils from every high school in the county comes together, and they meet once or twice a month, and they sort of reflect the views of the students in the county. So it's just like any other governing body, only for students, they come together and vote, and one of their main responsibilities is to elect their student member on the Board of Education. That's how it's done in almost every county that has it. An alternative that I think would be appropriate that ironically Montgomery County does, I think it's appropriate for us because we're a smaller system compared to many of the other counties in Maryland, is that every student would vote for the student member. So as many people in the 11th through 12th grade could submit an application for student member as they wanted, then it would be narrowed down to two throughout interviews through the board, through the county council, through the county executive's office, even through the governor's office if necessary. Then those two would campaign throughout Wycomico County, and they would go to each high school and give a speech, and then every member of that high school would vote for them. I think this is a good idea for a few reasons. One reason is that it sort of gives students a firsthand look at civic engagement. So there's a lot of students who might think that their vote isn't important when they grow older. In municipal elections, I think we've been averaging around a 19% turnout. Students don't necessarily know how to get involved in government, don't think that they can get involved in government, and this certainly shows that they can do so, and it shows that they do have a voice in the community, and it gives them sort of a sense of civic responsibility. Another is that if every student were to vote, that really just, you know, shows that that is the will of the students, and the student that's elected is certainly representative of the students as a whole.
How is it, how is it done now, the student representative?
In Wycomico County?
Yes.
So the SGA president at every high school is invited to the board each open session monthly board meeting, and those students give a report. One student per meeting sits on the board, and they may give their opinion during most times.
Okay, okay. Robyn?
Just as a clarification, that is the way it has been most recently during the time that I served on the board. We went to a procedure where one student, while not voting, as you indicated, was the student representative to the board. One of the problems that we had was for that student to miss so much time in class because of our work sessions. And then typically, it's also always a very busy student, so the nighttime meetings that are once a month were also challenging for that student because of their other junior and senior obligations. We used that procedure, or that process for three or four years, I want to say, and by the fourth or fifth year, we didn't have anyone interested in serving that we could find. So then we switched to the process that it is now with the student representatives from each SGA taking turns. I am highly in favor of student representation. It is a challenge because, as you know, so many juniors and seniors are just plain busy.
Thank you, that's absolutely true.
Thanks for your help.
My only comment was that the, going back to that procedure when I was on the board, we actually did it the way they're doing it now. And I know the board recently tried the new method, but as Ms. Holloway pointed out, it just wasn't workable. But even back 20 years ago, there's always been a student to come and talk to the board. I disagree with you in the sense that they did not have an opportunity to voice their concerns about whatever issues, because I think most boards allowed them a time and a subject, and even to the point that they were familiar with the agenda prior to the meeting, that they could address the board about anything. I never remember not allowing a student to give their opinion about anything, regardless of what it was.
Thank you. Yeah, I certainly didn't mean to indicate that the board was quashing anyone's opinion or didn't allow the student to voice an opinion. I just think that when you're talking about truly giving the opinion, truly giving input and being a part of the public policy, it's necessary to attend all of the functions of the board, including closed session, and any other way that the student can actually talk about each individual issue one-on-one with the board. I think the main issue most of the time is when students would go to board meetings, we were given the agenda at the board meeting, and so we were given a big list of resolutions, and we had no idea what any of them were. And so to give input during that time would have been nearly impossible since we didn't know the issues.
Okay, all right, thank you, we appreciate it. Dr. Boyd, how are you? Let us know who you are, by the way, when you speak so that we can, for the public.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Eddie Boyd. I served on the Board of Education between 1995 and 2005, so I served 10 years during that time period. And I have a presentation that I'd like to share with you. If you could take one copy and pass it on, please. I'm interested in at least having some discussion about what are the, what are some of the attributes that a selection process ought to have, a good process? And so what I've tried to capture here are what I call desirable attributes of a good method for populating a Board of Education. I believe that process ought to be open and fair to those interested in serving. It needs to draw upon a fairly large pool of suitable candidates. It needs to be a process that draws on a sufficiently large pool of candidates. It needs to produce a board that's reflective of the community and students' population. And probably the most important issue here is such a board process needs to select persons genuinely interested in and willing to advocate and work hard toward having a school system that provides the best education possible for all its students. And as part of this thinking, for me, I decided I would take a look at the boards of education in Somerset, Worcester, and Dorchester counties, and to share with you some sense of what the history has been in those boards. So on, in this document, the current demographics of the boards are captured there. In Somerset County, there are five board members, three males, two females, and one African, including one African-American female. In Worcester County, it's a six, there are six board members, six males, one female, including one African-American male. In Dorchester County, there are five males, no females, one African-American male. And one of the interesting things about Dorchester County, when I looked at the board members there, I found that there were two members whose last name was Bramble. So I then inquired with the Human Resource Office at Dorchester County School System to see if these two men were related, because one is the president of the board and one is the vice president of the board, and I was told they're brothers. So, you know, we have an election process that, and I need to be careful that I'm not in any way criticizing what goes on in Dorchester County, but I do want us to be aware of something like that could happen in Wycomico County, and whether or not then does that represent a broad representation of the community and what have you. And so I just throw that out here for your information. And also, in Wycomico County, of course, you know, we, our makeup is we have five males, two females, and including one African-American male on our current board system. And the next thing I did was I, I wanted to get some sense of how competitive had those elections been. For me, that would sort of say, you know, what is the level of interest in the community in serving on, on a board via this electoral system? And I looked at the primary election returns from 2000 to 2014 for each of the three counties, Somerset, Worcester, and Dorchester. In Somerset County, 90% of the seats, of the 21 seats that have been filled over that time period in the primary election were uncontested. In Worcester County, during the, that time period, there were 25 seats filled, 88% in the primary were uncontested. And if I uncontested, that means if, if two or fewer members entered into the election, then they went forward automatically to the general.
Okay.
So, all right? And then in Dorchester County, 93% were uncontested in the primary. So all total, 90% of the 61 seats filled during that period of time during primary, during those primary elections, were uncontested. So that sort of says to me that even though there was evidently some issue regarding an elected board, once we moved, or they moved toward an elected board, the, either the people who had formerly chose to serve on a board no longer participated in that process, or the interest waned over a period of time whereby you have, you know, in the primary elections, very little competition, you know, going forward.
Right.
All right, so then I looked at the general elections, which I've shared with you, over that same time period. And in, in this case, in each of the three counties, fewer than half were contested. In Somerset County, 48% contested, 52% uncontested. Worcester County, 44% contested, 56% uncontested. And there were some years when there were, you know, four board members elect, elected, none of whom had any competition. And of course, in Dorchester County, 47% were contested, 53% uncontested. So that says to me that somehow this, the system of elected boards doesn't always generate enthusiasm, maybe some people believe it would. And of course, whenever you have a shrinking pool of participants, I think that means it doesn't bode well for the county in terms of competition and what have you, bringing ideas, good ideas to the board and so on. And just an anecdotal bit of information, even in these uncontested races, I do know of examples where people had to scramble to get someone to run at all. You know, so at the very last moment, maybe someone would, would serve, or would choose to apply for, for the, you know, to enter the race. And so I think before we go forward with this whole discussion of an elected board, we need to have some thought and have some idea about, you know, will this increase the pool of people who are interested in participating? Will it increase the quality of the pool? All of those kinds of questions need to be answered, and just based on, on this little information that I've gathered, I can't tell you anything about the quality of the pool, but it certainly does appear that the pool shrunk over this period of time, and there are fewer and fewer people were interested in serving, and I don't think that bodes well for the school system.
Hey, Mark?
Yeah, do you have any idea if, you know, the low pay or anything like that was part of the issue? Because I know that was something that, you know, we discussed, I think, you know, this is right, a year, you know, that there was talk that, you know, going through an election is time-consuming, serving on the board is time-consuming, the compensation may not reflect the time being put in there. I mean, would, you know, do you think increasing pay would deal with some of those issues?
It may, but, but the increase in pay may attract folk who are simply interested in the pay and not interested in being a good board member advocating for an excellent school system. So, but I have no idea what caused, you know, the drop-off, you know, from what I can gather in Wycomico County, whenever there's an opening, we end up with a fair number of applicants and people willing to step up and participate in the process.
Yeah, my question was, how many incumbents might have been on here? You know, whether these are really good incumbents and no one wanted to, you know, challenge, that's hard to say, though, really, I mean.
Right, well, and there's, there's another issue regarding incumbents. You know, one of the things that, that I think is nice about the school board, the system we have, is we really do have term limits. The maximum period of time that you serve would be two terms or 10 years, certainly in consecutive terms, and I'm not sure if, if after serving 10 years, if anybody would want to go back and try for five more years. But nevertheless...
You might have to pass that mic around. There may be a definite appearance on that.
Yeah, it's very fine, you can go back.
All right. So...
Go ahead, I didn't mean to cut you, I was just joking.
But I think with the incumbency question, and I really didn't check that at all, but then there is the possibility that you may have a person that would serve on the board for years and years and years, and of course, then the turnover is less. Of course, one of the things about a school board is the board generally turns over almost annually. You know, almost every year, with the current process, you can expect one or two new members. And I think that's healthy for a Board of Education.
I can, I'm sorry, did you have the mic? Oh, well, it's okay. Let me say, I'm Gary Hammer. I'm the president of the Wycomico County Education Association. Thank you for the invitation today. I know many of the concerns that we had when we went to Annapolis and testified against the original bill was the lack of public input and sessions such as this. So I do thank the county council and Mark for gathering any information up. We looked at basically the same information, it's very true, if you look at the 23 counties in Maryland, that almost every single county is different in their process and the selection process and the vetting committees, et cetera. So I think we're in the, in the right direction with, with meetings like this. I think, to even take it back a little bit farther, I know in the letter that I think we all received that there were, the statement was, there's growing interest in looking at a different type or an elected school board or a different process for selecting the school board. I was just interested in how that assumption was made, or whether a survey was taken, or have we done something, or is this just kind of all of us hearing our friends or our neighbors or something saying that? So I have a little concern over that, to be very basic of, do, do the citizens of Wycomico County really have a big issue with it, or do they not? So that, to me, that's one issue, you know, to look at. I know as president of an association of a couple thousand people, you know, I send a lot of surveys out about what they think, but as far as, I can't agree more than what Dr. Boyd said here, very well put. I know our other concern was our community, particularly our student population, is very diverse. I think it is important to have a reflection on a school board of the diversity within the school system. Not only is the students diverse, our teaching, our teachers and educational support staff are very diverse. I just got back today from the National Education Association Conference. I had the ability to talk to every single president in the state of Maryland. I asked this question, and, you know, how, how is your school board selected? What is the general feeling about your school board? And I found in many cases, unfortunately, whether it's perceived, or it could be just, as Dr. Boyd said, who's interested in running, I think the big... as Dr. Boyd said, who's interested in running, I think the biggest perception, right or wrong, is the fact that it ends up being, and I can say this, kind of five older white guys and maybe one minority representative, which is totally unreflective of the community school system. Whether that's a time issue, whether that's who's dedicated to it or not, you know, it's kind of the elephant in the room sometimes, as you start to look around at Boards of Education. So hopefully, Wycomico County can come up with a way to not have that perception out there, at least we hope so. And then the other perception that a lot of communities have about their board is that there seems to be a perceived, once again, untrue or a perceived, or a true perception that, you know, you have this battle between the county councils and the Board of Ed on financing, whether it's, you know, we want to change the way the Board of Ed is selected to have more input on that. So I think we have to be careful to make sure that that's not a perception as we go through this process. So I think we're going to have to answer, be able to answer the community's questions when we go to input sessions of why we feel like this was needed, how was it vetted? Number two, how are we going to keep our Board of Education reflective of the diversity of the community and the school system? And then, how are we going to elect it? Is it going to be appointed? Is part of that appointing going to be to keep the diversity or not? And those are all tough questions, so I, I'm glad to be here and have input on that. I think, if I'm not mistaken, I know we, we talked a little bit about Dorchester County, I think they had a big yearly forum, et cetera, and Dorchester County really got behind an elected school board. And if I'm not mistaken, I'm not going to say this is the truth, the first year it came up for election, nobody ran. Or maybe one person ran, they actually had to go out and try to scrape people up to run. So everybody's in favor of having a voice in government and having, you know, the people's voice, elect these folks, get them in there, but finding the pool with the amount of work that needs to be done in that job, and people dedicated enough to put the time in to do the job correctly, and truly have that interest in student education and having the best school system, whether it's, by its own merits, that alone, having putting young people out there that are educated citizens, but to also have a school system that can bring business in the community, those go hand in hand, is really important. The other issue I found out is sometimes when people do run for an elected Board of Education, it's because they have a personal issue with the Board of Education, they get on there, try to get that changed, and then they're off. So I think all these things are things to be considered in our discussions with tonight and, and other nights as we move forward. So, thank you for the opportunity to have the input session. I don't think WCA would have took the stance they did earlier if this type of thing had been done the first time around. So, thanks.
To, to address your comment, as far as the diversity is concerned, when the council first brought up this, this subject to put forward to Annapolis, we had begun that process as, as completely elected, seven elected, and we adjusted it to a hybrid, specifically so that there would be two representatives, and in case the elected did not reflect the proper diversity, then you could have two appointments there, you know, at your disposal, whereas you could compensate for that and actually make up for that difference. And that's why we transitioned from a hundred percent elected to, to, to hybrid.
Certainly. Thank you. Yeah, well, and, and-
Certainly, I certainly, I'm sorry, I certainly appreciate that. I'm not just sure if, if, when you have a seven-person school board, if one or two minority members, or one female member, or, you know, that type of thing is enough to say it's truly diverse enough, I guess. So, but I do appreciate it was a consideration.
Well, and, and something that I think Delegate Carl Anderton mentioned to me, another way that we go with diversity in terms of an elected school board, we just have five members based on the council manic districts, and that might, you know, a five-member board, represent, you know, not, not too at-large, might address some of the diversity concerns. Because I know there's a concern when you have at-large, that that may dilute some of the diversity concerns. So, I mean, that, that's something that was also talked about, if we went fully elected, just at the council manic district. So, I mean, that's, I mean, that's something that has been, you know, so I'd be interested in anybody's input on, on those sort of, you know, those sort of issues.
I'll jump in one more time. I think, you know, with the five districts, it'd be pretty obvious that you would have probably one minority member on the board, and that would be it. You know, if you look at the, the five districts within the council here, it's pretty reflective of what you probably would see on the board with a five-district elected school board.
Sorry I was late, I had a family birthday party I was trying to attend. I did put together some information. I had hosted a meeting a couple months ago, I guess, and I asked for some past board members, current board members, our county leaders, county council, current and past. I invited our county executive, I invited our chair, Mike Lewis, to come, I had the president of the chamber invited, the Greater Salisbury Committee. So I had what I felt was a good group of people that could come and have an open conversation about an elected school board. Reason I did that is because I was hearing that this train had pulled out of the station, and I didn't think everybody really knew that it had pulled out of the station. So I thought that it was important that I get some kind of group together to discuss it. Some of these folks here that are up here with me tonight attended that as well. Based on that, I did give out some information, and bear with me for a second. I do have for our county council, a handout that I gave out at that meeting, and it's actually the duties of a board member, the responsibilities, basically it's broken out into three different categories, and also there's a sheet there that has the role of the superintendent. I also have for you, and I have some for everybody up here, there's another handout. Hopefully I have enough here. I want to take those and pass that out. These are some of the thoughts that I, that I have, and I think many of you in here will probably agree with me. We have talked about diversity. The governor's office has appointed many wonderful, professional, and caring individuals that were committed to our students and educational system. These individuals did not serve to receive a salary or to seek political recognition. The commitment came from a desire to serve their community. Over the years, Wycomico County Board of Ed has comprised of educators, bankers, farmers, doctors, PTA officers, writers, business professionals, nonprofit professionals, community activists, as well as ensuring male, females, African-American, white, Republican, Democrat, and independent members the ability to serve. And I can speak from my own experience after serving on the Board of Education for six years, as a member, vice president and president, that I did serve with a very diverse group of people that only wanted to make our school system better. Now, with all this discussion, my main concern and my hope is that people will make an informed, educated decision. I don't want decisions based on emotions, on a one-time experience. I want them to understand the role of a board member and what they're going to be getting from the people that serve, whether it's elected or appointed. I do believe that if you're there for the right reasons, it doesn't matter how you get there, if you're doing it for the right reasons. I think there's a lot of perception versus reality, and I've put together several things here that I've tried to break out for you tonight. Who runs the school system? The perception is that the school board runs the school system. In reality, we have one, and I say we, I guess I still consider myself as a board member, oh, there's one employee and that's a superintendent. The superintendent runs the school. Okay, the board members advise, give input, approve certain things that we are allowed to approve and put in, put in policy. We, as a board member, we are one vote. I think many of us probably thought we could go in and change a lot, and we found that we couldn't because of rules, policies, laws, procedures. Time commitment. There's a perception that board meets once a month at the public meeting on second Tuesday of the month. When people start figuring out whether they want to step up to this job, they realize that it's more than just one meeting a month. The Board of Ed holds public meetings on the second Tuesday of each month. They hold a meeting every Tuesday morning, typically at seven-thirty in the morning for a public work session. They attend school and community events. I know when I was serving, my calendar was full of things to attend. Hours and hours of reading and preparation, I can't tell you how many hours are spent preparing for meetings and discussions and decisions. And on top of that, there's hours and hours and hours of talking to community members, whether I was on the phone, email, text messages, at the grocery store, at the ballpark, community events. My kids got tired of standing and waiting for me to get done talking about school board business, but it is an unbelievable amount of time. I don't know what the current board members are, are doing as far as their time commitment, but I can tell you that I would estimate it's twenty-plus hours a week easy, if you're doing it right. Accountability. There's a perception that appointed board members are not held accountable for their decisions, and to me, that's an insult. The reality is, speaking for myself, I had a lot of sleepless nights because of the stress and pressure I put on myself related to decisions I had to make. These decisions were on the budget, policies, and personnel issues. We still had to show our faces in the community, and people were not shy to stop me and share their concerns. I have a personal and professional reputation that I am very proud of, and I am not a person that wants to disappoint, but I realize that it would, I would not please everyone all the time, and I think people need to understand the reality of how accountable, as a board member, you are. Transparency. The perception that the Board of Ed is not transparent. In reality, there are weekly public meetings every Tuesday, whether it's a work session or the public meeting. Transparency Portal is now online, the Board of Ed updates monthly their check register. You can actually go online and see what the board is spending every month. The budget preparation. The Board of Ed does not see community input, is another perception. The Board of Ed holds two public meetings to get input for the budget, there are at least four work sessions, and the board members attend and participate in the construction of the budget. Audits. Board of Ed conducts annual audits each year by a local accounting firm. MS, Maryland Department of Education conducts audits every two years. Legislative audit conducts, conducts theirs every seven years. Their programs are audited from MSDE, such as Title I, CTE, and Special Ed, and I think there's one more that I've left out. And I just, I want to say this, that the Board of Ed provides more information than you guys here on the county council. I think you guys have one audit a year, and nobody really comes in to audit you. So as far as the Board of Education, I think the board members and the superintendent, over many, many years, just now while I served, were very open and honest and provided information openly. And we talked about the pay scale. It did come out, come up at the meeting that we had a couple months ago, and I would, I think that, my husband made a joke one time, that I probably don't cover, didn't cover my gas with what I got paid for being a school board member. But again, I didn't do it for the money. I was asked to serve, and I considered it, and I did it. I enjoyed ninety percent of it. It is, some will say a thankless job, but it was a job that I was proud to do. And, you know, I think that whatever the vote is, it is, I, I don't think it should be a five-two. If you want a true hybrid, make it a four-three. And I see on your notes there that you have an option of the county executive appointing. To me, that's like having the fox in the hen house. I, I feel like, you know, we want people there that are just truly there to serve the school system, to make our community a better place. And I'm saying this, I don't, I don't really get into politics, I don't want this to be a political move. I think you should do things because you truly care, and I'm a little upset at the fact that the train has pulled out of the station without us having these kinds of conversations beforehand. I think that we kind of deserved that conversation first before it was sent up to Annapolis, so, thank you.
What's your four-three makeup? You say four-three.
You want to ask me that? I would rather have four appointed and three elected. But I know that someone will agree with me on that topic, but...
Appointed by whom?
I think it should go through the governor's office, like it currently is. Right now, our current process is, is that anyone could fill out an application and submit it, doesn't have to go through a central committee, it can go directly to the governor's office. And you put all your credentials, all your letters of reference, everything with that. And if you have people in Annapolis that are looking at those applications and looking through all the information, they should be choosing the right person for the job.
Okay.
So, thank you for the invite, I'm glad to be here.
Thanks for the information.
One more thing, so, would you say that you favor hybrid over full elected?
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if it was my choice, I would stay with the current process.
Okay.
But like I said, this train has pulled out of the station, and if there's going to be a change, I would want to compromise. And, you know, to me, a four-three would be the somewhat compromise.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I would just like to thank Mrs. Wright for her diligence, her presentation. Fortunately, I had the opportunity to participate in her previous meeting, and much that she said, I feel comes from her heart. And to me, that is one of the most important things about this job as a board member of the Board of Education. You must have a compassion for it. You must have a compassion for the people that you're serving, and the people that you're serving are the children. I guess I also would like to just say that she closer remarks, and I guess I'm assuming that you are asking each of us at our personal position, I, I don't know if you're assuming that we're all with you. I'm not with you, I'm going to say, tell you right up front, I'm against you totally. Because I think about the many years that the current system has been in existence, can any of you tell me of a board member that you would have kicked off the board for the last forty years? Now, they've been chosen by the process, by the system, by the interviews, and their personal presentation, but is there any of them that you personally would like to see gone, or have been gone, in real honesty? And do you really think that any of them didn't do the very best job for the children that they could do? So I ask you to consider not so much the old saying about if it's not broke, but is it something that we just really need to be doing at this time, and for what reason? Are there many other issues in this county that we need to be addressing as a community and as a council that are much more important, that carry a much heavier load for our citizens than this issue? Or is there that small nucleus of energy somewhere that keeps sticking the needle about we need to do something about this, just because many of the other counties have done something about it? And if you go and talk with many of them, as Gary seems to have started to process, many of them are not happy with what they finally ended up with. Because you also find that when you really talk with them, there's more issues in those situations than you have, or that we have. And in all cases, even if you haven't elected, you got to deal with it for the next four years. You're only dealing with us because we're appointed for five years. And if you have some feeling that that person should not be there, you have every right to notify the people who are making the decision to give your opinion as well. And let us also remember that we've heard the comment that the governor does not have to choose from the list that he presented. But you know, in your own common sense, that the governor does not know Ed Henry from Adam, and if my name went to Annapolis, he's going to ask somebody, who is Ed Henry? Adam, and if my name went to Annapolis, he's going to ask somebody, who is Ed Henry? And somebody's going to give him some information about Ed Henry. And if that information is honest and true, then the governor will make his decision based on that. If he needs to go outside of that group or list that he's got, that's his privilege. But how many times does that really happen? When you really think about it, how many times when we hear those kinds of criticisms of the system, has that really happened? So I ask you all to listen. I think Eddie, Dr. Boyd made a wonderful presentation. Mrs. Wright has given you some information that we've all, or many of us have discussed. She's given it to you in a manner that is coming, I truly feel, from her heart. You know Mrs. Holloway's heart as well, period Gary. Please just stop and think about, do we really need to do this now? And why does it keep coming up? Why does it keep coming up? Is there somebody, something just keep needing you about it?
I think it keeps coming up to try to address your concerns. I think it keeps coming up because the, at least the feedback I get from the public in general is, you know, the comment that why should our school board be appointed? Why should we defer to the governor to make appointments that the electorate shouldn't make for themselves? What's wrong with saying, let the people decide who they want to be on the board instead of a governor who doesn't live in Wycomico County?
John, I have no, Mr. Cannon may, I apologize.
John's okay.
I have no disagreement with the people's ability and interest to ask those questions. But I look to you, each of you, as the leader of our community, to have an answer to say, what has really happened in this county? And many of those people that are talking come from someplace else, where there was a different system, a different custom. And so, there's nothing wrong, I expect you to defend what successes we've had. I don't expect you to just bend, and that's why you're here. You have to make the decision, but you also have to make it based on what you really know has happened in this community for the last, since 1867. And that's what I expect you to do. And I think every citizen expects the same of you, that you do it based on what you know is right, not what somebody is telling you you ought to do. And we have to stand up and explain why we think it's right. If you're not willing to defend that, then that's something else, and maybe I have to defend it. But that's what we need, that's what we expect of you, in my opinion. There are so many more issues. I would love for you guys to be talking about, how can we get this county out of this economic fiasco that we got ourselves into 10 or 12 years ago about these tax situations? That's what, and then get down to the public and talk to the citizens and explain what's happening to us.
We're working on that, too.
Well, I know you, but we got to because it's going to bury us. It's burying us now.
I understand that, yes.
And we need to get in a position where we can talk with our people, explain what's really happening to them, so that they can become a part of the solution and not just ask all the questions. We need to answer those questions, and I need to shut up, maybe somebody else will do that.
Well, if I can make a comment, I think what you've heard tonight, once again, with Dr. Henry and Michelle said was, number one, do we really have an issue? Or is, as Michelle made very good points of, I do feel in Wycomico County, there's a perception, and this is a problem nationally, that something's this big problem, whether it's getting media or press or just gossip and rumor around town of, you know, the people need to write the vote, I'm not against that, the people need to write to elect their officials, I'm all for that. But if you've got something that has worked, and you have these misconceptions, and you create something that actually makes it worse, that is an issue. So I think the community really has to look at, is this a real problem? If it is, how are we going to correct it? And is what we decide to do the correct method in correcting what the issue is? But I think identifying what the problem the community has, if there is one, with the current system is part of the problem. Now, the other thing I wanted to bring up, because I've had discussions with John and some folks on this, is how to present this if this does proceed. You know, I'm a firm believer in a choice, because how you put something on a ballot, you know, can make it be voted one way or the other just by the way it's worded on a ballot. So I'm all about, you know, we talk about choice and letting people have a choice. I think keeping it the way it is obviously should be a choice. If you just put on the ballot, we're going to get elected school board in that spirit of Americanism of electing everything and having a voice, it's probably going to pass just on that alone rather than its merits. A voter referendum is where a law has to be passed by the General Assembly or local government has been petitioned to the ballot by the voters to challenge its dismonitation. We talked a little bit about ballot initiatives, which are not really permitted by state law. Instead, Maryland has what's referred to as a charter amendment. Charter amendments are efforts by local government to enact laws. They can only be used by counties with charter governments, which includes this one, and primarily the larger counties in the state. So in Wycomico County, if we're looking at a referendum or a charter amendment, generally charter amendments and voter referendums offer two choices, two. You're for or against keeping what you have or going to what you want, or yes, we want to keep what we have, or no, we don't want to keep what we have. However, because the State Board of Elections is aware of the issue in Wycomico on the school board composition, they believe they can accommodate a charter amendment with up to three options. I think that's important. It doesn't have to be one choice. And this will, you know, it might take a little bit of effort, a little extra cost, but if this is the train we're already on, I agree with Michelle, that I think we need to have options on there since the process wasn't vetted earlier, that it was really an issue.
Question, is it an issue?
Yeah, is it an issue? So by offering the choice, it not only determines whether there was an issue, but it makes it a fair choice. So I will put that in there on this discussion also.
So you've, have you talked to the State Board of Elections about this?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Do you have that information about how that would work?
I have that information for you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That was similar to what Jim Mathias said. He, when we spoke before, while we were in the middle of this process, he had said that you could have, and he called someone from the Board of Elections while I was on the phone.
Right.
And said, you can have a choice of three, John.
Yeah, as you point out, though, that's not usually how referendums work. So that's where, you know, where the, because referendum, as you say, is yes or no. It's, do you approve what has been proposed?
Well, I think, thank you. I think, you know, as we said, every single county in the state of Maryland has a different system. So I have no problem with changing the way you do things, just because 22 other counties do it through referendum or charter amendments, it doesn't mean Wycomico County can't do it differently. We may need to do it differently, and we have that flexibility, it needs to be a possibility.
Can I, John Allen, Chair of the Greater Salisbury Committee. I will say that Greater Salisbury Committee does have an education task force, and over the last several months, our focus has been on education. But primarily, our discussions have focused on student success and what do we as a business community, as business leaders, need to do to close the gaps, to help our students become more successful? And I will say that we have not had a lot of discussion about the school board itself, the makeup of the school board. It is something I would like to take back, not only to the task force, but to the committee for further discussion. But I believe, just as you've heard here, there will be varying opinions from the membership about where they stand on an elected board or where they stand on how things are done now. But I would agree that if there are systemic issues that need to be addressed, that need to be identified, we need to work through those things and giving people the opportunity, which I believe is always going to be a challenge, I deal with it as a challenge in our own, in the business that I work in, which is the utility field, that anytime you're having open comment sessions or public hearings, how do you get people engaged? How do you get the message out there that you want people's opinion? How do you get them excited about even showing up? I mean, there's nothing exciting about a rate case, but if I hear on the other end that people are complaining or making comments about things, and the question becomes, why didn't you show up for the hearing? Why didn't you voice your opinion? So I think there becomes that question about how do you get people engaged in the discussion? And while you have individuals, and I believe folks that I've spoken to, particularly those that have served on the board, there's definitely no question about their commitment, about their desire to see students be successful. So I think it does come back down to that if we are having or experiencing systemic issues, that we really need to identify those gaps and look at how do we close that gap. GSC does not have, we're kind of neutral right now. We're kind of in the same position that you are in hearing what people have to say. But I also believe that we need to begin addressing some of the other issues that have been identified. And Dr. Fredrickson shared with us that there are over 750 students that need mentors. So we're looking at what can we do as GSC to help close that gap as far as mentors and engaging the employees in our businesses to become engaged as well as the membership. So we're looking at what are some of the low-hanging fruit and the quick hits that we can step in. But again, this discussion is not one where it's going to be solved overnight, but I do believe that we need to get the community more engaged. The individuals that are here in this room tonight and then sitting here in front of me, they're engaged, but how do we get other people engaged is the question.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We have about 10 minutes, just so everyone's aware. President Shawnee?
My name is Mary Ashanti, and I'm president of Wycomico County NAACP. This has been, the issue of going to elected school board has been an issue for about probably six or seven years or so, and it keeps coming up. But when folks, when I hear people talk, they're not concerned about, I really have not heard anyone come to me and say, we want elected school board. They're concerned about the achievement gap and how, like Mr. Allen said, how to make students successful. And I think the thing that, over the years, that has bothered me, when the county council members have brought up this issue in reference to transparency and having elected school board, the thing that bothered me, and it probably bothered most people, is that we've never heard anyone from the county council talk about the achievement gap and how to make people successful. All we've heard is that we need to have an elected school board, we need to have transparency and accountability. From the people that I come in contact with, they see this whole thing as being political and as being partisan and a tool to apply pressure. Because right now, the school board is appointed and not elected, so you can't threaten anyone to remove them or whatever, because they can't be pressured because of the vote. They don't have to worry about that. So I think over the years, I mean, I've heard this, and the impression that I've gotten and the impression that the people that I talk with is that the priority is wrong. We don't think that it's basically a community issue. We think that it's a political issue, and it's a particular party that's been pushing this issue over the years. So we stand as we always stood. The appointed works, and we support the appointed. The other thing is, it was mentioned the last, the last go-around about having the county government, the county, having the county executive to appoint and with some input from the county government. What I heard when I went to Annapolis, they questioned, why would we want, we didn't say it quite that way, they said that the government puts more money into the education system than the county. And they were a little bit concerned when you said that we want to take the decision-making from the county, I mean, from the governor and place it in the county. We do not want, I don't know what the outcome would be, but we can tell you what we don't want. We do not want the county council or the county executive making any decisions about who serves on the county council, the county school board, period. That's not going to change. I think Michelle said it kind of nicely about the fox at the hen house and all that and whatever, so that's, no. But the other thing, I think Mr. Henry said that I get input from, and I think when I first received a phone call about this issue, I think it was in December, and I asked the county council person, was this the most priority, was this the top priority? We have unemployment, we have poor housing, we have problems with homeless. But the thing that we keep hearing about is this appointed, this elected board of education. And, you know, if we want citizens to really have faith in the county government and have trust, then kind of act like you understand what they're going through, the housing issues and their homelessness and whatever. Those should be a priority. And also making sure this achievement gap is, student's success should be a priority. But I have not, in my years of coming here, I've not heard that. So, you know, that concerns me, but, you know, I'll participate in this, but you know what we think.
The reference as far as the, concerning the political maneuver, I always perceived it as somewhat just the opposite. I felt that in looking towards other options, we were trying to follow a more democratic process as opposed to the appointed process. Strictly above board, yes.
Dr. Boyd, I think, spoke to some critical issues, which are the characteristics by which the process should fall into place. One of the key characteristics, I agree with you, Dr. Boyd, is openness. And we do not, in any way, shape, or form, have an open school board appointment process. There is a cloud of secrecy regarding whose names have been thrown in the hat, regarding who has sent their names to Annapolis. There is no open forum by which, I had the opportunity from 2001, or again, when I was reappointed in 2006, to say, I want to serve again, and I want to tell the public why I want to do that. Or I want to serve the first time, and here is what I think my skill sets are that I bring to the party. Additionally, during the time that I served on the board, there were five years where I was either vice president or president of my 10 years, and there were times when it would have been helpful to say, we're lacking in a skill set. That might be a finance major, that might be someone with a government background, that might be someone of a minority background, that may be someone with a teaching background, but that's a luxury to be able to have that conversation and say, this is what we lack and this is what we need. It's not personal-driven, but skill set-driven. And there is some advantage, I believe, when the process is open, when the people that are interested in serving have the opportunity in any way, shape, or form to stand up and say, I'm interested, I want to do this, and let me share my story. We don't have that in Wycomico County now, and I think that is a crucial problem with the way in which our school board members are appointed. I think it also encourages people to step forward if they look at the field and say, you know what? I think I can do it better. And I think that encourages people to step forward. I do believe that we need clear minority... I do believe that we need clear minority representation. As several others have spoken, we clearly have a significantly changing demographic in Wacomiko County schools. It is a concern, as evidenced by the 700 students that need mentors. Very few people truly understand what some of those needs are. I'm glad I served as a mentor four or five years while I was there. It was one of the most significant and important things I think I could have done to learn what the issues are as related to the board. Having said that, I think the key concerns are, as Dr. Boyd mentioned, there is a certain amount of apathy in the other local counties when it comes to putting your name in the hat to run for the board. You all know better than anyone else, it's time consuming to run and it's expensive to run. That is a concern that I have. I am not, Mr. Kilmer, in favor of five members solely because I think it would be too hard to always have a majority to conduct the meeting. People are busy, people are professionals, people are on vacation or sick, and that's just, we've got to conduct business in a planned, deliberate, and orderly fashion. So I wanted to at least give you that feedback. Having said that, I really believe that an open process in our community is the right process. And anytime that we have an opportunity to let folks in our community hear the issues, I think that we are indebted to them to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Holloway. We have about room for two more. Mr. Allen, I know you had expressed an interest. You're okay?
Mark McGyver?
Oh, I understand. No, I know. I was just letting people know that. Go ahead, Mark.
Hello.
You're there.
Thank you, John. My name is Mark McGyver. I'm currently the chairman of the Republican Central Committee here in Wacomiko County. I'm very familiar with the current system because it is our Republican Central Committee that sent several names up to the governor in this last round of, last round of Board of Education appointees. I can tell you right now, the current system is flawed. In order to be on the Board of Education, you have to be a registered Democrat or a registered Republican. If you are a non-affiliate or, if you're registered non-affiliate, you cannot be on the Board of Education because that's the rules. So that's not a, is that correct?
Unless you, you could send your name directly to the governor.
It's my vetting process.
But, but the final round, I think, has to be, the way it's broken down is four Republicans on the board and three Democrats.
No, actually, John Sherwell actually took the seat of an independent person before he served.
So anyway, I'll check on that fact.
I'm pretty sure that's accurate.
But still, in the selection process, non-affiliates are not represented as far as sending the names to the governor. There was a concern raised earlier this evening about maybe not having enough qualified people that'd be interested in running. But I can tell you, in our committee, we had seven very qualified applicants who were very sincerely interested in running or serving on the Board of Education. It was a very difficult process to try to, you know, select, you know, the two most qualified. I think there's a lot of interest in people wanting to run for Board of Education, and I think if it was an elected process, it would encourage even more to qualify. On a national level, elected school boards are about over 90% in this country. Appointed school boards are very rare, and hybrids are almost nonexistent in a nation, across the nation. So 90% or more, and I think the number is much higher than that, of Board of Education members in this country are elected by the populace. I have a, I think it's interesting that you, some people feel that the governor or a group of politicians in Annapolis can do a better job of selecting a Board of Education than the citizens in this county. I think that's frankly absurd. It is our children, it is our county, it is our taxpaying money, even when it comes back from the state. Where did that state money come from? It came from the taxpayers. And it is, I think it's very important that the people of Wacomiko County have a say in who sits on the Board of Education and makes decisions about educating their children. So obviously, I fully support a 100% elected school board, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGyver. One more comment, sure.
As I said earlier, what I'm hoping for is for people to make an informed, educated decision. I guess if you can educate me as council members, and we don't have to do it tonight, but maybe you can email me or call me, I would like to know what your feelings are, why you think we need an elected school board, what you think is going to be different as a result of elected school board. I've given you information that shows you and points out what the job is and what it consists of. So I'm really curious as to what you think is going to change. And then I also wanted to ask for help in educating the public. My question is for you, how are you going to educate the public on this information? How are you going to get it out so they can make an informed decision? I would like to ask NAACP, Greater Salisbury, Chamber of Commerce, any other organization that would be willing to help get this information out so people can make the educated, informed decision. So they're my questions for you, and it would help me understand better about what you're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make one comment before we close?
Sure.
And it goes back to the question whether this would be a referendum or a charter amendment or what have you. The last referendum that I recall taking place in Wacomiko County grew out of a number of citizens gathering signatures, enough signatures to say, "We as citizens believe this is something we ought to do." And then based on having gathered those signatures as part of the referendum was then proposed by the county council. And I would just ask whether or not a group of citizens have initiated this process and come forward with an appropriate number of signatures so that now you're taking the action you're taking, or you're just taking the action based on sort of anecdotal information you've gathered here and there and whoever have chosen to speak to you about the matter. And that's troubling to me that, you know, you're basing this on information that may not be real accurate information. And then, of course, with regards to Mr. McGyver's comment about the seven persons who in, had an interest of serving on the board with the current process, they had an interest of serving, but I don't think you can gather from that that those seven people were interested in running for office. They were interested in serving. And I think that's one of the things that this process gives us, you know, is that we get a decent pool of people interested in serving via the current process. What is missing though, and what is frightening to me is, based on the little information that I've taken a look at what's going on in our surrounding counties, is that interest seems to wane when, as they move toward an elected board.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. This time, can any council comments? Councilman Davis?
I keep hearing it said that the train has moved forward. Well, it did go forward, it went to Annapolis, and they made us back up. That's why we have these meetings. These meetings are for the people to inform us what they would like, whether it's an elected school board or whether it stays the same. That's what we're here for. We want to know what you guys want. We have this meeting, we're going to have three more meetings out in the county, and then fall to get the input from the people. So it's not, the train is not going to go back forward without the input from the public.
May I make one comment about those meetings? I think Michelle's point, Michelle's, I'm sorry, Mrs. Rice's point is very valid, even though you have a meeting in the community. What we have to keep in mind is that our community in many ways is not informed. And the question becomes, how do we share, I wanted to say educate, how do we share information so that they're at the same place that we are, that you are? And that's the issue. You can go and have a meeting and somebody can give you their feelings, but if they don't understand and have an appreciation of what you're talking about, what you truly are trying to tell them, then it does no good.
That's why-
Because you'd have a meeting and it sways them to whatever way you want to sway them.
That's why, that was really the council's intent of having this forum here before we began the public hearings, because we did want input from the, what we consider to be the stakeholders as to maybe what the best direction might be to go, and I think that's a good point.
Can I just say one other thing? I think the thing that scares me the most, and this is another American tradition, is about money and taxes. And it scares me to death, as a 38-year veteran of teaching, to have people go to a public hearing, and they're probably concerned because the Board of Education budget is the largest part of the budget and they want to cut that money. It also concerns me that people who may be interested in serving or running, that that would also be their primary concern. Because as a Board of Education member, it's not about the money it takes to educate the whole child, it's about getting the job done. And whether we like it or not, it does take funding to do that. So that, to me, is another concern. And I think as we do public hearings, as both these folks have said, we have to make them informed on it, how much it costs to do that. There is a lot of transparency about that. And what does a community want to do for our children? I know in everybody's own home, parents do an awful lot of cutting their budget for the sake of their child. I don't think the school board should do any different.
Any other council comments?
I guess I would say thank you for everybody who came. We certainly appreciate your ideas and the information you provided. Yeah, and to speak to what some have asked, you know, do we know what the people of Wacomiko County want on this? We, no, we don't know. That's why I would like to get an answer to this, and the only way we get an answer is to vote on it, though. That's, you have a vote and that settles the issue, whether we want an elected school board or not. And that's, I mean, that's something that, you know, I'm, you know, if it happens, you know, I'm sure Mrs. Wright will be out there saying, "Vote no" on this. And that's, that's the discussion we should have. That's when, it's during elections that we, as citizenry, get informed about the issues. That's when we have these discussions about what does the school board do? What do we want for the future of our schools? And I think part of the problem in Wacomiko County is that we don't have that discussion on these issues. You know, on the council, we hear from people, you know, you're running for office, "Oh, you know, I don't like redistricting, you know, the schools." Like, well, I'm glad you bring that up to me on the council, but we have no control over that. We have no control over what the schools do for the achievement gap. The way that we can educate the public is to have an election to talk about that, and then to have an election of we want an elected school board, and then we find out if people want that, and then we put this issue to rest. Yes or no? They vote no, then we have our answer. They go, "Yes, we have our answer." And then we don't have to talk about this anymore because we have an answer. But until we actually, the people get a chance to vote, we'll never know the answer. And we'll keep having these meetings again and again and again because there is an interest out there for it. And I hear it all the time when I'm in public. I hear it all the time. I was down at the Westside Fire Company, you know, for buying chicken on July 3rd from them, elected school board came up. And that's, we hear about it all the time when we're out in the public. Let's put the issue to rest. That's, I mean, so, but we need to have these discussions and we need to hear on, you know, what we should be voting on. And I think that's why we talked tonight, you know, like, you know, say, not five member, you know, stuff like that is important as we make decisions and maybe what we should recommend to our delegates. And ask for a local bill is, you know, what works for Wacomiko County? Because we do have unique needs. Every county is unique. What works here uniquely for us? So that's, I mean, I appreciate hearing from everybody on that.
Any other council comments?
I just want to thank everyone for showing up tonight. Everybody that made a comment made very valid points. Dr. Boyd, that information that you came up with, with the no contested, uncontested races, I heard the same thing surrounding counties. But if we can get a lot of people, I think that may work as well. But I would hate to see us changed to this form of government and then nobody wants to serve in the elected capacity. But either way, the public should make a decision because, to be honest, we have been hearing this for the past 10 years. So one way or another, we got to put it to bed.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank everybody for coming tonight and taking your time here. That's why we brought you together, because we knew that you would bring to the table very valuable information, what you've shared with us. We do appreciate it and we'll review it very much. So we have reservations as well as a council. We do understand the fact that there are costs involved, as Robyn stated, that, you know, someone that may be appointed doesn't have to worry about that. If you're elected, you have to worry about those costs. We're worried about diversity. We're worried about the fact that the hybrid that we initially proposed, I think it was a justifiable argument when it was stated that if the county executive appoints those two, you do have the fox guarding the hen house. There might be a conflict of interest with that. I don't think we had anticipated that in the beginning. But, you know, lack of interest is also a concern. And don't think these aren't things that, you know, from bringing to the table, we understand this and we do appreciate what your comments were. Also, on the other side of the coin, such as, you know, as Ms. Holloway said, you know, people, there might be people out there that do want the freedom to express what they'd like to do for their community and to participate in the political process, to be a member of a board as opposed to being, as it was referenced, to a closed decision right now among just, you know, groups making those appointments or individuals having to solicit directly to the governor and allowing the public as a whole more participation. So you can see the balance. I'm not quite sure what direction this could head. It's one of those be careful what you ask for type.
But open doesn't mean political, I don't think.
Well, again, when you say political, yes. Well, we're all part of the political process, but that's also the democratic process. So, but again, I want to thank you all for coming. Do you have something to say? Because you look at me like whenever Joe does this, he wants a comment. I wanted to personally thank everybody for coming tonight. I really do. And your information.
I want to thank everyone, too. I'm going to follow up on what Mark said. This is about one thing to me. It's about giving the people of Wacomiko County the right to vote on what they want. We're not putting forward, to begin with, what we're, what we're really going to vote for in the end of what kind of school board we're going to have. All we want and all we've asked for is a referendum. Does people want an elected school board? Give the people the right to vote in Wacomiko County on what they want. If that's, referendum's put out there and it comes back and they say, "No," hey, we move on. But I hear it all the time. Mark said he hears it all the time. I hear it all the time about elected school board. It's half of our budget. Why isn't it elected? And somebody made a comment a while ago about everything being open. I reserve that because we just went through this issue with the buildings that are being rented over behind Lowe's. Nobody knew much about that. That just happened. And that's something that happened that's going to affect the finances of the Wacomiko County school system and Wacomiko County for a long, long time. And we talk about public, we're having public meetings and bringing things, things out in the open. That wasn't vetted to the public very well, if it was vetted at all. So there's not a lot of openness, or hasn't been, about some things on the Board of Ed. That's all we want. That's all I want for the citizens of this county, is the right to make a choice. And I, it really disappoints me that some people don't seem to think that people should have the right to vote. And I don't understand that. So thank you for coming again.
Thank you all very much. And please feel free to contact us, to email anytime you want, or by phone.
How are you? Yeah, whatever. It's, what's that? Okay. You've got my number. Call before I make sure I'm there, so they don't have to. Come by yourself. It's all cleaned off, ready to go. Hey, thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. You're just a listener, of course. You're a good listener.